I have the Portsmouth Public School Board and Dr. Bracy. First, I'll acknowledge Chairman Potillo. Good to see you, sir. Vice Chair Atkinson and all the members of the school board. And we want to welcome our newest members to the Portsmouth Public School Board. Dr. Jaclyn Walker, Ms. Letitia Sessoms, and Ms. Arnett McSwain. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
And all the other school board members. Want to welcome the school board staff and all the support folks that are here. Our city manager, Mr. Carter, and our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams. Our clerk, Mr. Debra White. And I do want to take a moment to recognize my colleagues on city council. All of you who are present, thank you all for being here. Bracy, want to recognize you as well. And Mr. Falk, good to see y'all.
Thank you.
With that, I would like for our portion of the meeting to call the roll. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Mr. Dotson.
Here.
Mr. Hugel.
Present.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Tillot.
Here.
Mayor Glover. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Bracy and his leadership and Chairman Potillo.
Thank you, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, and members of city council. Thank you again for the invitation to have this meeting to discuss the superintendent's estimates of needs. Thank you to all the board members who are in attendance. And I ask now if our deputy clerk will call the roll for it.
Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
Mrs. Boone.
Here.
Dr. Cotton. Mrs. Futrell.
Here.
Mrs. McSwain.
Here.
Mrs. Sessom.
Here.
Ms. Schumay.
Here.
Dr. Walter.
Here.
Dr. Potillo.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, present.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. You all have your floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you again for having us. I'm going to ask now if Dr. Bracy will come forward with his presentation. It is an in-depth presentation of the needs represented by Portsmouth Public School Division. And I ask you all, please just hold your questions to the end of the presentation, and he'll be happy to answer those for you at that time.
Thank you, sir.
Well, good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, and members of council and members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to share my estimate of needs for the 2025-26 school year. Before we dive directly into my specific recommendations for this year, I will first turn it over to our CEO, Mr. Theodore Falk, to go through the first part of the presentation to give some necessary background into our funding sources.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Moody, Chair Potillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, all the members of city council and school board, present. We stand before you tonight to give you an overview of the superintendent's estimates of needs. In the first part of this presentation, I just wanted to give you a good snapshot of the funds that are included in our operating budget, as well as what those funds are normally used for, and the percentages in those funds. As you can see on this slide, the general fund, which is the largest fund within our budget, equates to about 79% of our budget. That is basically all of your day-to-day activities through instruction, transportation, operations, any of our administrative attendance and health functions, and it governs the school, the day-to-day business of the school division. The second fund is the risk management fund. At 8% of our budget, the risk management fund handles all of our health insurance, all of our risk management activities, such as your property casualty insurance, any of your other insurance fees, workers' comp, and any of our other risk management activities. Next is our grants fund. Obviously, that is the place where we receive all of our federal, local, state, and other grants within the school division. Those that you may know, like Title I, special education, as well as vocational education, at 8% of the budget. Next is our cafeteria fund. As it states, that's where all of our food services activities are held in the school division's budget, and that's 4% of the budget. And then lastly, we have our textbook fund. Our textbook fund, as it states, basically governs all the purchases of textbooks and instructional materials in relation to those textbooks, and at 1%, that rounds out our funds for the school division. So, the total of all of our funds, just to give you a snapshot, is about $295.4 million. Obviously, as I said, the general fund, being the largest, is $232.4 million. The risk management fund accounts for $23.7 million. The textbook fund, $1.9 million. The cafeteria fund, $12.3 million. And then the grants fund at $25.1 million, which, again, for a total of $295.4 million for our total budget. Now, we go into a look into just the general fund budget itself. On this slide, you see that the 25-26 budget is roughly $232.4 million. That is a difference of about $22.4 million over the 24-25 budget, which was $210 million. This proposal includes initiatives that were identified to us by our stakeholders, our school board, our parents, our community, were those things that were important to them and important to us as a body to make sure that we provide the necessary resources for our schools and the necessary inputs. It includes instructional resources to enhance our instructional programs and deliver instruction. It includes student support as we address the needs of our student body. It includes funds to operate our buildings and infrastructure, to make sure they're safe and adequate each day to welcome our students and be safe and inviting places to learn. It also includes information for transportation to get our students to school each day, and obviously, all of the other things that we do on a day-to-day basis. Dr. Bracy will walk you through those specific examples that we have later in this presentation, but just wanted to give you a snapshot of what the budget looks like now. We've, again, worked diligently with all our stakeholders internally to create a conservative budget and need, things that the school division needs to make sure our students are prepared to and equipped to graduate and go out and be protective citizens in this society. Next slide, please. Our budget always, as you know, state funding is a big portion of our budget. We always base our budget on the governor's introduced or amended budget. In this case, the governor has amended the Bionio budget to 2024 to 2026. This is the second year of the Bionio budget. In this budget, normally what you see are changes from the state, from the General Assembly level, based on their deliberations. As we know, they're deliberating right now. So, what shows up in the governor's budget may not necessarily be what we have at the end of the General Assembly session, but that's the best information that we have right now. One thing that the governor does in his budget every year, you have updates to average daily membership, which average daily membership is one of those components that determines the revenue that you receive from the state. The other one being local composite index, that I'll talk about a little later, sales, tax, and lottery revenue. As the state determines their estimates for those, they build into the budget as to what we will get back from the state based on those estimates. And then, his budget this year also included funding for a 3% raise, salary increase for SOQ positions. SOQ is standards of quality. As we all know, and we've talked about this in this room before, standards of quality are the bare minimum standards for funding schools or staffing schools throughout the state. For example, in our calculation, the state funds roughly about three assistant principals at the elementary school level. It would be impossible to run schools with three assistant principals in our 13 elementary schools. So, that's just an example of how the standards of quality do not fund totally what is needed for school divisions across the state. And then, as I talked about, the local composite index, it remains at a .32369. That is a local ability to pay. That is what that particular index manifests. So, just to give you a simplistic example of the state's funding, basically, that says that we're supposed to match roughly about 24% of that funding, and the state will kick in 76%. So, that's how they determine how much of the revenue we receive based on that local composite index. So, our budgeted revenue sources, you will see on this slide, the total revenue that we're estimating is $223,35,975. As you look at that and break it down, the majority of that money is coming from state funds. 52% comes, $121.6 million, comes from state funding that they said they're going to give us. In addition, another 9% comes from state sales tax funds, $19.8 million in state sales tax. That total for both of those is about $141.4 million. You will also see that we've kept local funds at a level amount at this point here, at 38%, $78.7 million. Then, we also have other funds, which are rentals, interest, funds that we receive from other places, about $2.2 million. And then, lastly, federal funds, which represent Impact Aid and also RTC funding at about $700,000.
And then, with that, I will turn this over to Dr. Bracy, and he can give you an overview of his estimate of needs.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. The estimate of needs I present to you tonight is not an exhaustive list, but it's not a small request, however. It also should come as no surprise to anyone around this table or to the viewing public watching at home. Tonight, I'm making my formal request for the $14.8 million to address the salary compression to our pay scales. This will ensure that our employees are being compensated not only fairly, but also competitively in a market that is in constant demand for skilled educators and staff. I say this comes as no surprise because our division has been working toward this recommendation for the better part of two years. We've hired an outside firm to come in and do a full analysis of our job titles, job descriptions, and salary ranges, as well as an evaluation of the other locally and similar-sized school divisions. They made their calculations and shared with us the funding amounts necessary to ensure our teachers and staff members were caught up with industry standards. We shared this information with you, our city council. We shared this information with you, our city council, in the fall, and requested at that time that you would fund the full amount of $14.8 million. For context, for the people at home may be asking, how is teacher pay this far behind? We see everyone gets a raise each year. People make more money the longer they work for you. That's how salaries work. In theory, that sounds right, but in practice, it's all wrong. While we've given annual raises, we've not given a step increase in pay in closer to a decade. That means that when we give a raise, everyone at every level of the pay scale gets the same increase. So, when we hire you at a set salary this year and put a 3% raise in place for next year, that means that the set salary for the new hire next year also gets the 3% raise. The new hire will be making the same as what you are making, despite you having more experience. This has been compounded and compounded for our staff members since 2016. So, what does that look like? We've shared with you, last year, our staff members, who have six years of experience, are making the same as a brand-new teacher. Six years. It's not until year six that you progress to a new step. Our replacement on our pay scale, and see an adjustment in pay. This is one example, but compression is seen throughout our scales. Unfortunately, across the nation, we're in the midst of a teacher shortage and a decline in population to join the field of education. That means the staff we have working for us are precious commodities. Yet, when you look at a region like Hampton Roads, retaining those veteran teachers is next to impossible. If you ask why, we're just 10 to 20 minutes away from Norfolk, Suffolk, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach. That's a pretty easy commute in any direction, and it's not an exaggeration when I tell you that our experienced teachers can go work for any of these divisions instantly and make $10,000 to $12,000 more dollars per year. Now, we pride ourselves on providing a great working environment for our staff members, including support, opportunities for career progression, access to the latest technology, and many more things. However, I ultimately cannot fault anyone for wanting to do better for themselves and their families. So, here we are. This destination has been a long time coming. We've heard about compensation concerns from our staff for some time. We've done the best that we can, including a 7% raise for all staff last year. We've increased our recruitment efforts to include international staffing pipelines. We've contracted with instructional staff to fill the vacancies. The issue, though, is that we're losing our veteran teachers who have mastery, not only in content and instructional delivery, but also classroom management and navigating the social, emotional, and mental health needs of today's generation of students. And we're replacing this loss with newer, less experienced staff, who, again, we're grateful to have, and they're great in their own respective rights, but they need development as to anyone new to a job does. The overriding problem, then, is our accreditation, is placed squarely on the shoulders of classroom teachers and how successful they are. Therefore, we're being held accountable based on the work and experience of our staff, who are newer and newer to the profession and lack the training, expertise, and skillset of those who have been in the role for decades, or if not more. Let me show you what that has looked like for us recently. On the screen, you will see a breakdown of the licensed teachers based on years of experience for the past three years. The blue bar represents teachers with zero to four years of experience. The orange is for teachers with five to 10 years of experience, and the gray represents teachers with 10 years or more experience. Each year, the number of our veteran teachers has declined. Specifically, we have 36 fewer teachers with 10 or more years of experience in our classrooms today than we did two years ago. We have another 61 fewer teachers with five to 10 years of experience from two years ago. That is 97 veteran skilled and experienced teachers that we have lost, and we've lost them due to our inability to compensate them competitively. I also want to make clear that our licensed teachers, that these are our licensed teachers, these do not include our staff who we have contracted to cover the classroom vacancies, while who are not licensed, or the long-term substitutes who are also covering classrooms. With this $14.8 million, we're projected to be the number-one division for teacher salaries in our region. I fully believe this will help us in our recruiting efforts, including inviting the staff who we've lost in the past three to five years to come back home. It will also help us encourage staff who are in sister divisions to come and see how they can shine brighter together with us here in Portsmouth. If you were to sum up what my estimate of needs is, you would be right to say employee pay. That is my focus and my priority. It is also why the $14.8 million is not only the funding we need for compensation. For this year's budget, the governor has put in a 3% raise for all staff members, and we're certainly in support of that. However, as is the case for every year, the state only provides funding for raises for SOQ positions or standards of quality positions. SOQ positions, as Mr. Falk mentioned earlier, are the bare minimum requirements for the state, and localities, including our own, staff far above the SOQ level. For example, positions such as bus driver, school nurses, are not SOQ positions. And Mr. Falk gave a great example of the assistant principals, how they can vary with just one AP to two to three elementary schools. So, here in Portsmouth, only about half of our employees are SOQ positions. Therefore, we have to locally make up that difference for each raise that's given by the state. Therefore, in order to give the 3% raise this year, our staff members, we will need additional funds. And I want to be clear, this does not address compensation. This is just to be in line with the state raise for next year. The $14.8 million is to course correct our pay scales and to ensure the rightful pay for all employees. As such, the total amount needed for this raise is $5.2 million. While employee pay is the focus of my budget, and it's a large request, I do want to be transparent and share that I have additional staffing that also needs to be included for the upcoming year. As you know, our pay center is set to open next year. We have four teachers we need to add to the center, and that's welding, automotive, building trades, and cybersecurity. This is an estimated cost of $442,000. We're in our second year of our dual-language immersion program, which means we need three DLI teachers for the first grade. This is an estimated cost of $312,000. The state has made changes to the required allocation of students for the student-to-staff ratio for English as a second language instruction. Due to the state mandate, which was unfunded, we need 10 new ESL teachers throughout the division. This has an estimated cost of $975,000. Finally, the security of our students and staff and guests remains a paramount concern for me and our Office of School Safety. At this time, we only have one full-time security officer and one part-time officer at our elementary schools. We have seen an increased need for the part-time position to be upgraded to full-time in order to have constant coverage at the school. That is an upgrade of 13 positions at an estimated cost of $439,400. Similarly, at our middle schools, we need to add another full-time security officer. These three positions have an estimated cost of $187,200. All these staffing and security needs will cost us roughly $2.4 million. Now, if you've been running calculations in your mind as I've been going through this presentation, you've probably seen a very large sum right now. Addressing employee compensation, the state raise and these new positions would require an additional $22.4 million in funding. However, I want to make clear that we've done everything we can to minimize our final requests to the city. Not only have we limited and delayed initiatives, we've also pulled from every funding stream possible. Specifically, the state made recalculations to their contributions this year and also made funding sources that were formerly tied to mandates more flexible for localities to use. We're forwarding to all those funds and addressing this year's needs. As such, with our strategic use of funding available to us, we're now asking for $9.4 million in order to meet these needs, and, again, specifically to address the need for employee compensation. Again, I want to thank you for a chance to be here to break down my request for the school division this upcoming year specifically. We have to compensate our staff members competitively, and I shared that with the board last week. And it's my deep hope that we will be able to thank our dedicated staff with both our words and our funds come this spring. Thank you, and I'm happy to address any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, and thank you, Mr. Falk. With any questions from my colleagues on council? You have a question, raise your hand. Councilwoman Bryant, may I have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the DLI teachers. Not super familiar with the dual-language immersion program. As the children progress, we will add on teachers for each grade level. So, next year, we'll need second, third, as they move forward?
Yes, next year, we will need...
So, they're at the stage of first grade?
Yeah, third. So, that way, and we'll maintain the kindergarten, and that will keep progressing.
Until they reach middle school?
Yes.
And then, what happens when they reach middle and high school?
When they reach the middle school, then, we will develop a plan to see which middle school will be the one we designate to send those students to, to further advance the programs that we have established. When we get to high school, we have different options available with the foreign languages and so forth.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Councilman Hugel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the brief, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk. Thanks for pulling this together. So, my understanding is the $14.8 million to resolve the pay compression problem extends to the entire staff, not just to the instruction piece of the staff. Is that true?
That's correct.
Do you know what portion of the $14.8 is going to the instruction portion of your salaries? Okay, thank you. So, I know that you are in discussions about redistricting, but I don't know the timeline for that. Is the redistricting timeline such that it could impact next year's budget, or is there no impact to the budget for redistricting? Or can you give us a sense of how that might impact what your budget proposal looks like?
Well, we just had our initial meeting with the firm last week, so we would just briefly update it at that time. So, we're looking at the recommendations that they made to us, and at this time, we're still looking at those. We're going to come together sometime within the next couple of weeks with the Operations Committee to follow up with them. They were involved in that initial meeting, and we were tasked by the members of the board that was on that committee to look at some specifics before we come back to them. So, as far as numbers or anything or any impact, we don't have that at this time. As far as a timeline, it could be in effect for the next school year. It's a possibility, but right now, there's nothing definite on that.
Okay. And so, I guess the short answer is it might, but you don't know how much or when?
Correct.
So, we had a discussion at the Military Affairs Committee around the federal piece of your revenue stream, which I guess is based on the number of military-dependent students that you all teach, yes? How do you determine how many military dependents are enrolled in Portsmouth Public Schools?
So, for Impact Aid purposes, which is where the funding comes from, you do a survey every year throughout the school division. So, we send forms home normally sometime early to mid-October because you want to get those forms out once your enrollment has kind of stabilized in the September, October timeframe. And then, based on that survey, we then get those forms, we enumerate those forms to make sure that they're adequate, that the parents have filled them out appropriately, and then, you put that, you take each person that has responded, whether they be uniform military, whether they be live-on, work-on, so they live on the base, they work on the base, whether they be contractors that work on a federal facility, we get funding for that. We get funding for low-rent housing, any students that reside in low-rent housing. That goes into the Impact Aid application, and then, based on the funding for the federal government, they give us an amount that we would receive based on the whole pot that goes to the whole country.
And do you have a sense of the quality of the return rate? I mean, you're sending a thing home with the kids in the backpack, and you're hoping to get it back, and you're hoping all the information on it that's on it is right, because if it's not right, then I guess it gets kicked out of the system, yes?
Yes, sir. Or we send them back to parents. We do some back and forth.
Can I jump in a little bit on that?
Yeah, please.
Just as a parent, me and Kitty's looking at each other because they don't play about the return of those forms. Like, so, your child is going to get pounded message until that form is returned. So, I'm pretty sure they have a almost close to 100% return rate, the way that they make sure that those forms are, because that funding piece is ready for it.
Yeah, okay, good, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilman Dotson.
So, I wanted to read something about the state law to us, Title 15.2. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Dates for budget submissions and adoption. State law requires officers head to departments, agencies, and commissions to submit to the governing body on or before April 1st an estimate of the amount needed for the upcoming year. If the estimates are not submitted, the clerk or designated person must prepare the estimate. It's a practical matter. This means the estimates must be submitted well in advance of April 1st, so that a coordinated, comprehensive budget request can be submitted to the governing body. The governing body must approve the budget and fix the tax rate by July 1st. However, because state law requires the school budget be adopted by May 15th or within 30 days of receiving the estimates for state education, or cities and towns that operate school divisions must adopt their budgets in time to meet the deadline. I appreciate you guys starting this so much earlier this year so that we can get those things done. I mean, this is amazing that we're starting it much, much better than last year to get that done. But that also requires that we get, as you all talked about last year, a budget with detail this year so that we can satisfy that state requirement. I don't know what the legal requirements are, what we might be subjected to. That's going to be for our city attorney to give us some kind of ruling on, but I want to make this smooth because I know you've got a board here that is enthusiastic about making you guys the best that we can make you. So, the deadlines are there. Please, 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 let's work ahead of those. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
We have a question. I didn't notice in the statement of needs, and I don't know if this has been included in the past, the update on our capital improvement needs. Did we have any capital improvement needs? I know you mentioned about the Pay Center is going to be opening, I think, next year. Did I hear that, next year?
Yes.
Okay, so are there any capital needs as it relates to the Pay Center or other capital needs? I'm sure when we get the budget, it'll be included in that, but I just wanted to ask as a point of discussion.
And I can, as far as the CIP list, that's already been submitted to the city already. The full, complete list of CIP projects.
Okay.
Councilman Dodson.
As a new council, we may not have access to that. I'd love to see if we can get that.
Manager. Yeah. We can, we can get that from the manager. That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Simple request.
That came up at a liaison meeting that we had, and at that time, we went back and looked at the list, revised it based on some of the capital improvement projects that we currently had in place.
Right.
Or that had been completed. So we resubmitted and re-itemized by order of need what that new list would be, what would be with the amounts attached to it. So that was sent to the city engineer with that information.
And I do want to thank you, Mayor and City Manager. They do meet with Mr. Wright monthly to go over the list and talk about the needed projects for the school division. So thank you all for that as well.
Sure. You're welcome, sir.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Since ADM is one of the factors that determines the state funding, how's that trending? And is that based on last year's ADM, last March?
So the, the new budget, what, what normally happens in the governor's budget, they update the ADM calculations throughout the budget cycle. In this case, for this particular budget, it looks like about 162 student decrease based on the state estimates at this point. So, but every, every time they do a budget, they update the, the enrollment projections. And in fact, even when the General Assembly does it, sometimes their enrollment projections are slightly different from what the governor puts in. But yeah, each time, it's updated.
So how does that correlate to funding? So you mentioned 162 less. How would that affect the funding?
Well, obviously, if you have a decrease in, in students, you'll get less funding. I don't have an exact number to you, but what, what that, what that entails, it depends on whether, obviously, what students there are, what stu- but a decrease in students means a decrease in funding.
But there's no correlation that for every 50 decrease or every 100 decrease, it correlates to X number of dollars?
It, it can, obviously, because all, all of your, your state funding is not contingent on, on enrollment. So for example, I'm trying to think of a, of a good one. Your SOQ, your Standards for Quality Funds are based on enrollment, but not every funding source is based on enrollment. That's why I say it's hard to say in a compressed area how much that means, but we could go back and look at it if you need us to, and we could get you, get you an estimate on that.
And what percentage of the school-aged children are we, do we have attending Portsmouth Public Schools?
And I can't answer.
It's in, sorry.
How could we get that? That number's got to be available, I would think, maybe through the State Department of Education.
Should be on the census.
I think, I think that would be good to, to know, and, and what I'm saying is that if we got X number of kids that are going to school elsewhere, you know, why not try to do a marketing campaign, if you will, to target those families that are spending X number of dollars sending their kids elsewhere?
Well, that, I think we do a good job through social media, which is probably the preferred, preferred choice of parents. I think everybody has some type of device in their hand and is looking at, looking at that. But you've got homeschool parents, you've got parents that decide to send their kids to private school. So we know who's being homeschooled because they have to submit the request to us. We know the ones with religious exemption because they, that information comes before us and the board approves that. But as far as the total number, as I think I heard Vice Chair Atkinson say, that number is probably available through census. Now, I think we do a great job of putting out the positives that we have going on within the school division, and we have come up with these new initiatives, just like the dual-language immersion. You know, that's something that other divisions are offering, we weren't. So that's something that we put in place. I know I've had conversations with some parents that, of course, you've known about the first college program that we've done here for a number of years, but when I arrived, one of the things that I brought in when I arrived was the early college program. Because when I came, I saw where we had three students that actually took courses on their own to get a associate's degree. So we brought that program in, and now I think our numbers are somewhere up to, what, 39 this past year, and they're expected to increase this year. So those are initiatives that, that we continue to put in place, I think, with the CTE, the Pay Center, that's going to be coming. I think that's going to be very attractive to a lot of our parents because, you know, some parents have a phobia of, of leaving the division, leaving certain schools and having to travel to a community college. So I think if we have the program here, that may excite a lot of parents to have their kids stay with us. And we've looked at different numbers, and we're working on some things because we know we have a lot of parents, for whatever reason, that when their kids leave elementary school, which is currently sixth grade with us, that's when they're transitioned to the homeschool, private school. So we're working on initiatives to see what we can do to try to keep them in our school division. So that's something that, that we've, we've tossed around and tried to figure out, what is it that we can do differently that will make that parent feel better about remaining in Portsmouth Public Schools?
And, and the reason why I've mentioned that, because inflation's having an effect on everyone, and if parents are sending their kids to private school, I'm sure they're feeling the strain of inflation as well. So the time might be right to maybe do some out-of-the-box reaching out to those parents to see if they want to rethink Portsmouth Public Schools for their kids. Just a thought. And the other thing with ADM, since it does have an impact, truancy. Obviously, truancy affects that ADM number. What, maybe share with me a little bit about what are we doing about truancy?
Well, with, with our kids that, that we've identified that they're not coming to school, we have a, a program in place that we, that we identify through our Director of Student Services. We really implemented that in the mid-year point of last school year to reduce the number of absenteeism. We talked about it, I think, in this meeting, chronic absenteeism. So what we did, you know, we put in a measure by, we can identify those students that are absent because we get a report on that in a, in the system that we use. And what we do, we work with those schools for the principals to identify who those students are so that we can address them, whether it's after school or if it's coming in on a Saturday. You know, we, we'll pay our teachers to come in to work with those students to try to recapture some of that seat time that was lost. And the state gives us the flexibility to be, to be able to do that, and that helps shrink the numbers with our chronic absenteeism. Being that we implemented this at the beginning of this year, we see a significant decrease in where we were last year this time because administrators, parents, everyone is familiar with it. And that's something that it, it takes funding force to do, but that's something that we've worked out because anything that we do in Portsmouth, we got to provide transportation. Anything that we do, we keep kids behind or bring them in on Saturday, we have to feed them. So it's been going great and helped us get our numbers down because at the end of the year, when you look at the report card from the state, you, what you want to see with us with the attendance and the chronic absenteeism, we want to make sure that we're in the green. Green, that means that we can get the credit to help us when it comes down for accreditation.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
You next, Councilwoman.
And Superintendent. I want to just address, I was going to go back to a question I have based on Councilman Hugel's question about the 14.8 million, but in regards to truancy, what Vice Mayor brought up, you know, it's a, it's a great place to be coming from school board into this seat and also with kids in the Portsmouth Public Schools. Because when you think about truancy, yes, the school has, you know, absentee policies, you know, they send out text messages. One of the things, if your child is out, they're going to send out a text message if they're out for like X number of days, it's like a, I forgot the threshold, then your child will be recommended for some type of like Saturday class. So they're doing a lot of things, I do know, just from a parent receiving notifications to address that. But I think we also, as a city, truancy is not just a student issue, it's a family issue. So we have services from a city standpoint with behavioral health care, with social services that we need to also pour into to address truancy and absenteeism in the, in the schools. Because kids can't get to school by themselves. If it's a family issue at home, then that impacts the schools number. That's why I love these liaison meetings where we're working together and talking through these issues. Next, you brought up a great point about marketing, and I think with the, this is going to tie into the staff compensation and the other programs such as the Pay Center. One thing, if you think about marketing, we're having Chick-fil-A, right? And people go to Chick-fil-A because it's consistent quality. And so investing in our teachers, investing in our staff compensation, that's really the marketing, when you think about what would make a person put their child in Portsmouth Public Schools. They want 10-year teachers. So to keep 10-year teachers, we have to invest in this pay compensation. All of that flows together. So I, I really like how we're talking through these issues and from a city and school board standpoint, but just thinking about the bigger picture, why we have to address some of these needs because it plays into the, the things you're talking about, the ADM and the truancy. And so I just wanted to bring that point up. And then my question that I was going to ask, Dr. Bracy, when you say instructional portion of salary, you mentioned it was $9 million for that out of that 14.8 million. For instructional, you're just talking to teachers in the classroom, right?
No, we used to.
When Councilman Hugel asked, what's the instructional portion of the 14.8? You're just talking teachers in the classroom?
That's what he asked about. That was the number, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the rest would be for like school nurses, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, and so forth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
I attended the last school board retreat, and I was very impressed. And I think you should brag on that absentee numbers. I mean, some of those numbers that I saw in your first year were amazing, how much you got the truancy down. And I wish y'all would, when we get a question like this, would just show how good, how good you did. Most of your schools were down about an average of 50%, if I remember right.
Yes.
Some of them were down as much as 80% in there too. And I think you need to brag on those numbers because those numbers are what advertise our school and gets the word back out to our city. And put those numbers out over and over and over again. As to the other question, the last superintendent's report that I read said we had a little over 17,000 students. Is that correct?
No.
What's our current number?
Current number now is somewhere around, what is it, 13? A little over 13.
That, that report that I read, we had a 10% in private school and about 5% or less that were homeschooled. So as far as our numbers on those, it's less than 15% that I think that we have out that aren't, aren't attending public school, which I think in many communities is a very low, if not number, to try and market to out there. I think bragging on some of the good things that you're happening out there to the public and to this board would be very beneficial, like he's saying, in advertising.
And, and we do that, and, but I guess why we didn't bring that up tonight, because the purpose tonight was to come and discuss the budget. You know, that was something that we needed to discuss.
I had the numbers.
Numbers all on the screen.
Thank you. I was just so impressed with the reduction that you had.
And I appreciate it, and I'm glad you were, you were able to, to come as well. And to go back to something that Ms. Thomas stated, that I think that also plays into this, is that, you know, you all know Portsmouth is an urban city. We have an urban school district, and when our kids, sometimes when our kids are out, it's not because they want to be, it's because they have to be. Our, our students, our older students are caregivers.
Yeah, 13,000.
You know, they take some of their parents to their medical appointments. If the, if a younger sibling is sick, parent has to go to work, they have to stay there with, with the kids. And that's something that's communicated to the schools, and then those are some of the students that we work with to try to help them recoup some of that time that was lost. So if you look at a lot of the absenteeism that, that presents itself, it's not because they intentionally stayed at home and out here on the streets. They have real-life responsibilities as adults do, and we, we know that, and we take that into consideration when we work with the students and the families.
That's a good point.
I think when you come into the budget, I think we'd love to have you brag more.
I got you.
Yeah.
So if I go off script, it's okay with you?
It's okay with me. I want to hear the good things that are happening.
Well, actually, I'm going to handle the script, so. We're going to make sure we don't go too off. That's important. We're here to take care of business. But a couple of things I did want to point out, in looking at the page that you had the years of experience, as, as I had seen in the past couple of years, it seems like when we're looking at the experience, absolutely, I see where you're going in terms of having the resources to pay your folks, and, and it shows me very clearly. We do very well with our entry-level teachers. They're coming and they're, 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 they're earning what they should earn in the role. And as we all can see, we're, we're not doing so well with our 5 to 10 or 10-plus. And so, so I think that based on this information, it's a very good visual for us to understand, and we know, based on what we have heard, I've listened to you, Dr. Bracy, and you, Mr. Falk, for a long time, and we know that this is something that we have to tackle as a city. And so based on the numbers, I think that we are appreciative of the work that you all put in to bring this forward to us. We've got some work to do in order to get where we need to be, and, and I just want to make that clear. But make no mistake about it, the seasoned teachers that we are losing, the 5 to 10-year folks, are critical to our stability in our school system and our success. And we know that. I just want everybody to understand that. This council is not unopposed or against the success of our children or our school systems, and I share with Dr. Bracy all the time, when we have a conversation, he reminds me, Mayor, you, 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 you're on my side, right? And, and I always have to remind him, yes, I am. And so I just wanted to be clear, from a standpoint of the leadership of this council, we are going to do everything within our ability and power to ensure that we support not only our children, but our leadership in our schools, because that's important. And even at the end of the day, I want to be clear on this point, if we can't get absolutely where we want to be on everything, I think the priorities that we need to make is definitely this. Would you agree, Dr. Bracy? So, so we want to let you know that, that we're going to do all of the work that's necessary together. It's not us against them type of scenario. We want you all to be as successful as you can be. Why? Because it makes our city successful. And that's not rhetoric. I'm a product of public school, and many of us in this room are. And if we intend for our children to rise and soar and be that shining light that we want them to be, we've got to invest in it. And I can assure you, with this team, we are going to do that. So just know that, Mr. Carter. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I did.
Okay. You have the floor, sir, because you, you were beating your, your hand there, so I, I got you.
Yeah, I was just patient with you. Get my opportunity to say a couple of things. One is, I appreciate the tone of the meeting. One is, I appreciate the toll of the meeting. We have come together, and we've talked about some issues, gathered some good people to say, and good things about what we're going to do to support you. I would like for us to consider, I talked to Dr. Bracy about this, allowing myself and him, and maybe a small group of people, to work on a revenue sharing process, so that we can kind of establish what the annual funding would be as we move forward. So instead of having to go through an exercise where there's a guess about what it's going to be that's already previously established, but it needs to be something that we work on together, not one that you bring to me, or I bring to you, but that we bring to each other, because we've actually worked on it and came to an agreement of minds, similar to what we did last year when we were going through a similar exercise, where you both boards allowed myself and Dr. Bracy to just kind of meet and talk about it until we could work out an issue that seemed acceptable to both sides. So I'll bring that up again as a way of moving forward. And actually, working out many things that may come up between the boards, if you guys, whatever the issue may be, and don't want to predict an issue, but whatever the issue may be, if you allow us the opportunity to bring our minds together, and then bring you back a solution, I think that may help move this process along a lot.
Chairman Potillo?
Yeah, I spoke about it with Dr. Bracy, actually, a couple of weeks ago, in reference to the attempt to do something a couple of years ago, we had a brief discussion about it. But I do feel as though the more, I'm going to say this in a good way, the more you keep us out of it, I think the better.
Right.
I think if you all could come together on a regular basis, and work out the needs of the city, and the needs of the school division, then bring it to us, at that time, I think that would be a great opportunity for us to discuss and see what benefits both the city and the school division. And I'll allow my, the bottom of the comments if you'd like on that as well, but.
We have a great, great working relationship, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
We have a great working relationship, and we've been able to actually have some really candid conversations about where we are and what we're trying to get done. And I think that kind of conversation matters when you're trying to work out some issues. And it also matters that there's a mutual respect. You know, I don't have any lingering distrust or, you know, unresolved issues, and I hope that he doesn't have any of those with me, so it makes it easier just to have a conversation. You know, cut from a place of professionalism, and we're just going to work these issues.
Dr. Bracy, did you have anything else?
No, sir, I think we've covered everything. I mean, we talked about the Pay Center, and I think the only other CIP piece there was, was dealing with the K-8 school.
Yes.
That you all have assigned the architect, you know, we're in the design phase, we actually have a meeting with him tomorrow. I know we've been receiving some emails, and I know that my team has been working with Mr. Wright to look at the site, because I think it has come up recently that the current proposed site may not be large enough to incorporate the playgrounds, the outside activities, as well as athletic fields, and so forth. So that's something that I hope that we can resolve as we move this along.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Well, once again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your time and your continued support and the work that you do for our children. We're all in this together, I can't stress it enough, because at Portsmouth Public Schools, we want our children to shine, is that the word?
Shine brighter.
Shine brighter, right, that's what I'm talking about. So let's continue to work on it. I know, but are you okay with the process that you and Mr. Carter have passed out? Is that all good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we'll let that evolve, and I know that we'll get input and feedback, and we have some time to get to where we need to go. And so with that, I want to just say thank you again. And should you have any other questions or concerns, call Mr. Carter. It was a joke, it was a joke.
Not really.
Seeing no other business to conduct for the good of the order, that concludes our public work session. Thank you all, and continue to do the great work that you do.
Thank you.
See yous adjourned.